If you could find a seat, would you like to bring this meeting to order? So if we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, thank you very much. Russell, would you do the roll call, please? Here.
Vice Mayor Jablonski?
Here.
Councilmember Hartman?
Here.
Councilmember Fissa Kelly?
Here.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Here.
All right, this is the LPA. Keith, you want to?
I wrote all for Rita.
Okay.
Mayor, we have a resolution of the local planning agency of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida recommending that the town council adopt or not adopt an ordinance that amends the town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code, ULDC, Article 45 entitled Agricultural and Rural Districts, Section 045-050. Use is permitted to require minimum plot sizes exceeding 2.3 net acres for crop raising and plant nurseries and 4.5 net acres for fish breeding and providing for an effective date.
Mayor, this is a quasi judicial item. As a result, the rules of quasi judicial procedure are listed in the town's agenda and will proceed under the quasi judicial rules. So as a result of that, what we'll do is let's have Russell swear. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, you can do swear.
Would you please stand and raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. In accordance with the town's procedures, the first meeting that we have tonight is the local planning agency. The local planning agency is required under Florida law that makes a recommendation to the town council. Because in Southwest Ranches, the local planning agency is the town council, this is the main public hearing for this item. Anything spoken about at this public hearing gets incorporated by reference into the second hearing, which is following directly this one. So Mayor, at this time, we're going to call upon Melgram Planning, Jeff Cadens, to enter the staff reporting to the record and to describe what's before you today, and then I have some questions for him as well.
Do you need a motion and a second first?
Maybe let's make the presentation first, and then we'll go from there.
Thank you. Good evening. Councilmember Schroeder, Fissa Kelly, it's good to see you both after, I know, a trying New Year.
Thank you.
We'll enter the report into the record, and it's actually a very simple ordinance. It is an ordinance that would, we use the word, reinstate, reinstate a 2.3 acre minimum lot size for retail plant nurseries. Prior to 2000, May 2003, the town was operating using the county zoning code. And in May 2003, the town adopted its own. And one of the threads, the policy threads at that time was commercial nurseries and whether they should be further regulated. At the time, there were, there was a lot of discussion about not wanting to preclude smaller operations, and at that particular time, the council directed that we remove the minimum acreage requirement for nurseries. This issue was revisited several years later because there were issues with certain retail nurseries in terms of compatibility. Ultimately, it did not result in any change to reinstate the minimum acreage requirement, but this ordinance would reinstate it for crop raising and plant nurseries, effectively retail plant nurseries in all of the zoning districts in the town. And that is what it does. It is not a retroactive ordinance, doesn't affect existing nurseries, but it's for the establishment of a new nursery.
Thank you. Mayor, if I may just ask you some clarification questions solely for the record purposes. Jeff, you just did it, but I'm going to ask anyway. Specifically, why was this ordinance drafted? What provoked this ordinance for being drafted?
Well, if anybody in the town knows, that there's been an uproar from some of the neighborhoods about one or more nurseries that have been causing some problems. And residents were demanding to know why we didn't have a minimum acreage requirement, what happened to the minimum acreage requirement we had in place when the town incorporated that would have prevented the establishment of these nurseries. We did some research. We saw that it was in fact eliminated in 2003, and a council member had directed the town administrator to prepare an ordinance for council consideration, and that's why it's here now.
Is there a timeframe of why it needed to be read tonight?
Well, we have a zoning in progress on this issue that's about to expire. And the purpose of the zoning in progress is that we have time to prepare an ordinance addressing the issue, so yeah, we need to get this on the agenda.
Who drafted this ordinance?
I did.
After you drafted, what happened to the ordinance? Where'd it go?
Straight, straight to the agenda system. It's an automated agenda system that gets all of our, all the council items on the agenda and processed through administration, and it's here now.
Does this ordinance impact the wholesale nurseries in any way?
No.
Is it correct statement that this ordinance only impacts new retail nurseries to prevent them from going on lots less than 2.3 acres?
That's correct.
Does this impact, and you said this, but just for the record, any existing nursery in the town?
No.
All right, at this point, Mayor, I'm going to turn it over to the council for questions of Jeff and any motion, and then we'll turn it over to those members of the public that have been sworn in for public comment.
Bob, go right ahead.
So just to clarify, I think Keith used the term wholesale.
Go to the mic, please.
Sorry, Vince. Just to clarify, the term wholesale nursery, that's an ag exempt piece of property with a state certified farming business or agricultural business?
Actually, as this ordinance terms it, it's any agriculture that doesn't involve retail sales on the property.
Okay, but since we can't affect any change to any farms or nurseries that are covered by the Right to Farm Act, does not, this could not affect those types of nurseries?
Absolutely, the state prams, any, any regulation on that end.
And I also saw here that we're looking for a much larger lot for fish breeding. What's the thinking there, or is this just go back to the original?
It's just a dial back to the original county language.
Okay. Okay, that's good for now, thank you.
What happens to these properties when sold? Say they're, they're one acre lots, and they have nurseries on them. Do they revert back to the original? I mean, do, do they become current? Now they have to have, if they sell it and they're gone, do they now have to have the 2.3?
No, no. The ownership of the property is completely irrelevant. The 2.3 minimum only applies to the establishment of a new nursery. But it doesn't matter, in other words, what I'm saying is, a nursery where none existed that is going to include retail sales. If there's an existing nursery and it changes hands, it's not pertinent. It doesn't matter. This is not run by ownership, it runs by property.
Jeff, there's one caveat to that for the record, and that is, if the use is discontinued, if you could explain?
Sure. Anytime that the town establishes a new regulation and it's based in a-
The residents that are living in this town, thank you.
Jim Blaski, 5780 Southwest 28th Avenue. Can I ask, Jeff?
Have you been sworn?
Yes, sir. I'd like to ask Jeff, who is the council member that asked for this resident? Oh, you are? Okay, great. Do you all, I mean, I assume you're involved with a business, but you understand the nature of a business. In the, in the case that this gentleman just brought up about the Farm Act, okay, if I grew kobia in a little swimming pool, okay, and I would yield a big profit, that would be in line with the Farm Act. I don't need 4.5 acres to do that. When I was in high school, I worked at the marine lab. We raised kobia and tarpon, okay? I got a friend of mine right now, today, over in Davie that's raising kobia. It's an extremely profitable fish. So that blows that one out. He is complying with the Farm, the Right to Farm Act, and it's a matter of making a bona fide profit, isn't it? Is there any exception to that? It's profitable. If you're making it, and most guys don't even make it profitable, and they still get away with it. The real problem we got was with the ancillary uses of the property that are protected under the Farm Act. Okay, if you've got 30 people, 30 different people, okay, with a yard maintenance company hanging out because there's a few trees out front, that's what everybody's complaining about. We got a ton of undocumented people going in and out of this town, largely from Hialeah, where they, they're wise to all that, and they can't get away with it there. That's what our real problem is, and I'm sure everybody in this room will agree to that. So lay off the beehive guy and the tomato guy and all that stuff. You know, they might try it for a while as a hobby or whatever, but if it's really successful, let it take off. Anyway, that's my piece.
Any other public speakers concerning this? John, just state your name, your address, and if you've been sworn.
John Eastman, 188th Avenue, have been sworn in. Those of you on the council for a while, you know the problem I had with my immediate next door neighbor for years. The man came in there, set up a small nursery, but it was just to cover for his three different lawn services that he ran out of there amongst other things. So it really degraded my property, having to put up with that. You know, we lost our peaceful, quiet enjoyment and use of our property, and to this day, the place is still a mess over there, and we have new owners, and he brought in even more filth. So he's put in some type of a commercial building, I don't know what his intentions are. But when you have a house that's a residential property and it gets converted into a business, then we start having problems. That's what we need protection from. But let's be careful with people that are already doing things that are not intrusive, and you know, we all have our property rights. Thank you.
Gay Chapels. I feel like-
Your address had been sworn in.
Yes, I've been sworn in.
Enter your address.
5901 Southwest 160th Avenue. I haven't moved in 60 years. At any rate, I feel like we're hunting with an elephant rifle here. This all started because of the guy next door, and it was a wake-up call. Part of the problem is, what we need to address, is residential homes cannot be converted into businesses. That was a residential home there, and then the guy came in, bought it, converted it into a business. Nobody is living there, and if they are, it might be the help, but it's not their residence. Now, if you have a residence and you've got a nursery in the back, that's fine, but I think that we have to be very forceful on, because if you say two and a half acres or more, they can go out and buy a house on two and a half acres and do the same thing. Just go ahead and convert the house into an office, and they're in business. And that is what is affecting these residential areas. It's not vacant land that's being used, it's when they take and buy a home, and then it's no longer a home, it's a residence. It's a residence when they start, and then they convert it into a business. You're allowed to have a business in your home. It's legal, and that means if you're an accountant, you can have it, if you're a designer, you can have it, la la la. But when you vacate everything and you convert it into a commercial endeavor, it's no longer residence. And I think, I don't know the wording, I'm not a lawyer, but I think that's where it is. And I think all the rest of this, people have a right to grow what they want, at least in this town so far, and sell it. So let's try another's way.
Thank you.
Steve Bright Cruz, 5120 Southwest 195th Terrace. I have not been sworn.
Russell?
Too tall.
Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Mayor, council, it's great to stand before you. You all are doing a great job. I wanted to just, just make a couple of comments. I believe, you know, this is, this is an ordinance that was changed back in 2003. The reality is, it should never have been changed to remove this restriction on it. So it's good to have this restriction put back in. I fully support it. I think it's going to be good for the neighborhoods, I think it's going to be good for the residents. I think what it's going to do is it's going to provide some protection to the normal residential roads in our town to stop them from becoming commercial avenues. And so it'll help keep us rural, it'll help retain the lifestyle that we all moved here and live here for, to enjoy. So I would encourage you to vote for this. Thank you very much.
Any other public speakers? Last public speaker, yes?
I have a couple of questions from what I heard. Is that okay?
You can ask the questions, and then when you're done, they'll be addressed. Could you just state your name?
17125 Southwest 54th Street. My name is Joan Kenny.
And have you been sworn in?
Yeah, I think. Not right this minute.
Yeah, you need to be sworn in.
Okay.
Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Sure, yes, so help me God, and all that. When my kids were little, I wasn't working, and I had a little bird setup where I raised birds, and I raised rabbits, and it enabled me to stay home with my kids. I'd like to see people in this neighborhood to be able to do that. That's number one. Number two, we've had some discussion, whether it's in violation of the federal Farm Act, the state Farm Act or not. I'm curious, is this going to engender a lot of lawsuits? Maybe we need to go after this by tackling it through ordinances about like Lady Gay said, forbidding you to change your houses into a business, maybe limiting the hours or the nature of trucks that you can bring down in a residential area. I'd rather see you do it through that than lock out people that may want to do something down the road or something simple. My kids even sold earthworms from under the rabbit cages. It was cool, and it was part of the charm. The high schools and the kids came to see the place. I'm not sitting on a lot of acreage, I've got more than what you guys are requiring, but I think somebody on just a little bit less could do the same thing, and I don't want to see anybody cut out. And I think you need to address it with ordinances, different than what you're contemplating tonight. Hit the problem areas that are there. Don't use an elephant gun for a fly, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public speakers?
Tommy Pinder, 4511 Southwest 133rd. I have just one.
Mr. Pinder, do you swear that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. Mine's just basically questions, too. So like, going back to what the one guy spoke earlier, he said it takes six hours to maybe add everything back in. Can some of these people possibly get a variance to, you know, go forward if they want to, if they have the proper property and everything that they're doing? And, you know, bringing up the fact about selling kobia or, you know, any kind of fish or whatever that is, I mean, this was really all over plants, and to me, if you're going to be doing that, you know, out of your house, and you're not drawing in retail people, walking in and doing all that, then you guys should put in force to like a business tax license like Hollywood and other places do, if you could get revenue off of that and control it, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speaker? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Oh, do you want to speak? One final one.
Cheryl Vanderheiden, 188th Avenue.
And you've been sworn?
I have not been sworn in.
Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. I actually just have a couple of questions. So what I heard is that you're trying to control nurseries. Much of the contention is about other types of agricultural businesses. I keep bees. The state limits me, my acre, to a number of beehives already. So I would like to know, does this only really apply to establishing new nurseries, or does it affect the mango orchard, the kobia pond, the beehives?
They'll be addressed when you're done. So do you have anything else?
No, that's my question.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no more public speakers, public comment is closed. Jeff, it's over to you if you'd like to answer any of the questions or final comments before council deliberates.
I heard two straightforward questions. One of them was the most recent one, that only affected, I think we addressed that a couple of times, yeah, it affects the establishment of new nurseries. We pointed out that the only time that an existing property with a nursery would be affected is if the property, if the nursery use was discontinued for at least 60 days, more than 60 days.
No other types of agricultural business, only the-
It's, it's retail operations associated with any agriculture.
So selling honey to my home?
Towards the variance, it, it is possible to request a variance. There's nothing in the code that would preclude somebody from requesting a variance.
Thank you. Mayor, over to you for deliberating.
Okay. Mike Hawley?
Gary?
Couple of questions that were brought up. Jeff, this is more probably towards you. Let's, I'm just going to use some examples that came up from the audience. Let's talk about the, and I'll use the term loosely, gentleman bromeliad farmer. How will this affect him?
What is a gen, what is the gentleman bromeliad farmer?
Somebody who's growing bromeliads and not growing it for profit, they're growing it for fun, and they give away the plants. What, is there, does this have any-
I have no bearing on that at all.
Okay, we don't need to modify the language to reflect that by taking out non-commercial or anything like that?
No, no. The example you asked that you raised before, like if you're, if you're occasionally selling something that you grow, occasionally, you know, I mean, if it's something you're doing on a regular basis, you start to become a retail operation. If it's a very incidental thing, like a garage sale type thing that you do once a year or twice a year, that's not affected by this ordinance.
Okay. Now, the next question I have is another example given by a gentleman where he converted his swimming pool into a fish hatchery. Can he seek a variance to do that?
Yes.
Okay, so that, it would be covered at that time?
Yes, anybody can, can request a variance for a smaller, to, to conduct one of these operations on a smaller property than, than this ordinance would, would require.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
I have a question for Jeff. If this, these people that are on less than an acre, or an acre or whatever, what if they decide to vacate their homes and convert them into part of the business? Then what happens? Now they're going to go live in Weston, but they're going to keep their little place and the ranch is here, and they're not going to live there. What happens?
Okay, so this is a situation where, say, an acre property, and it is currently a nursery or not?
Currently.
Okay.
But the house is a house.
Okay. I think it might be fact dependent because the use of the house is only permitted as an accessory use, but I don't believe this ordinance really addresses that issue.
But we have the laws on the book that the house must be lived in, and it's not being lived in. It's being used for something else. So wouldn't that violate and cause it to be revoked?
A nursery is allowed to have accessory buildings regardless of whether it was used as a house or not. So the former use doesn't really matter, it's what they're using it for now. And again, it has to be accessory. If it's, if the building takes up a really good portion of the property and it's not a legitimate agricultural accessory use, then that would be a problem. But if it is an agricultural, if they're using it for agricultural storage, an office, things that are accessory to the nursery use, then they concurrently do that.
And they don't have to reside in it and use it as a single resident, family living type facility. So they could just buy a piece of property with a home on it, gut it out, put an office in there with a pad of paper and say, well, you know, I'm using it for the nursery. So now we don't have a residence there. It was deemed a residence that one time, so now we don't have that. We just have a semi sort of, maybe kind of, commercial building sitting there.
I think the question is, are you allowed to convert a residential house, even though you're becoming a nursery, to an office and use it for ancillary items and not use it as a home any longer? Is that?
Basically, I mean-
Yeah, and, and I understand that to be your question, and the answer is the same. It, it, there's nothing that I'm aware of that would prevent that if the converted use of the building is strictly for farm use, for farm accessory use. No different than if you constructed a, a new building, an 800-foot storage shed where it were a greenhouse or something like that, that you were using for agricultural purposes, a small portion of which might be your, your nursery office. And like I said, it's fact dependent. It depends on, really, is that building being used for agricultural accessory purposes or not?
And I get that, but maybe I'm not understanding all of it. If it was deemed a single family residence, and now he's converted it into a semi-commercial building, how do we allow that?
To address this, to address your question as far as how do we prevent that from happening, two things. One of them, if, if, if it's a new nursery operation, it still would have to be, according to this ordinance, if there's going to be retail involved on 2.3 acres, we understand that if there's not retail involved and it's a legitimate agricultural accessory use, that they can do it. It would have to be, we would have to look at other ways to, to regulate that.
Code enforcement, maybe?
I think we would need new, we would need additional regulations for something like that, and I, and I think that the ordinance that's being worked on right now by the comp plan board would absolutely address that issue.
Okay.
Bob, go ahead.
So I thought I asked really specific questions on whether these folks who are currently operating under an ag exemption should be exempt from any, any of this? And that's not my phone. And I also thought I heard that if you're currently operating a business under the current regulations, if this is passed, you're not affected, you're basically grandfathered in. Then I'm hearing from somebody in the audience that that's all wrong. Can you hear me, Vince?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm talking to the mic. Speak into it. I'm new at this. The question is, which is right? We have somebody saying that's all wrong, everybody's affected by this, and I'm hearing from you and Keith that they should not be affected by this. Which is it? I'd be afraid out there if, if I'm hearing two sides of the story.
I don't know how, I don't know what the substantiation of everybody would be affected is. is. I don't see it.
Okay. So...
I heard an opinion. I didn't hear any, anything else.
Okay. I wanna make that clear because anybody can stand up and say anything, but they may not be right, is what I'm hearing. It's an opinion.
I heard an opinion.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
I jumped in, Mayor.
Go right ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanna, just wanna say that with the small acreage nurseries that have been popping up around town, we've got one next door that are destroying neighborhoods. People are calling this all the time. I know, I'm getting calls, you know, "Help. We need relief," you know, and that's really where this came from. The nursery moratorium that we put in effect, now we've had two extensions on it, I think. It's set to expire. They're really crying for help. They need, you know, in Rolling Oaks, we've got one. It's now a mini golf course. I'm kidding you not. You go there, you'll see exactly what I'm talking about. It is now mini golf. Now, they're selling putting greens, I think, or something under that guise, but I'm watching guys knock golf balls into a putting green today on the way here. So, you know, it, you can see how this can destroy a neighborhood, and this is, you know, this is some relief for the residents to have this.
All right, we ready to vote?
If there's no other questions, I'll make a motion. I'd like to make a motion. Do we approve it?
I'll second it. Any additional question? Freddie, you got any questions? Are you good?
More public discussion.
Sorry.
I just don't feel that the wording, the verbiage is quite correct.
No, I hear what you're saying, but we're also got the attorney and the land planner telling us it is correct. So, those are our experts in the field.
It's correct legally, but it's not correct to them.
I'm, I'm, I'm speaking about the guys we paid to do this.
Well, also remember, the county and the state supersede us, so...
Yeah. I mean, if you have more questions, keep asking. That's what they're here for.
I'm thinking...
Just for the purpose of the record, remember, this is the LPA. It goes from here to the town council, then it comes back at another meeting of the town council.
I mean, I believe most of it is, is good, it is solid, it clarifies to everybody what it really is because I know there was a lot of people doing farming and stuff, and they were confused about it. This doesn't really affect them.
We also have the ability, as Keith said, to, we can tweak it in between meetings if we have concerns. We have two meetings after this.
Okay.
But it's gonna take unanimous approval each time.
Well, that's a deep subject. And with that, I'd like to say something on that, that issue. That's where any one of us sitting up here can control your future. That's a five oh vote. If I don't like you, or I don't like what you did to him or her or whatever, and they come to me and they say, "Don't pass it. We're all only human." I get to stop it by saying no. Do you think that's fair, to give one person that power? How many of you think that's fair?
How many of you voted for it? It was a two-to-one vote in favor.
Excuse me, that was a two-to-one vote in favor of the registered voters that showed up, not the town. There's a big difference. No one is going to take a word into my mouth. I know what it means. I know that one council member up here can stop something that you want. And maybe they have the attitude that, "I know what's best," or, that's not me. We have that power to do that. One person. We're supposed to be a team up here. We're supposed to work together so that, and I'm not, I'm not saying that because I'm gonna, you know, stop anything that is good for the town. Never would I do something like that, but it is a possibility to be able to do that to yous. So, if you're all in favor of something as a group, as a unity, and just say, "We don't like it," guess what? You don't get it if we vote no. And say, "You don't want something, and we feel it's good," guess what? You gotta get it because we feel that. That's where that five oh vote is a serious thing. We had a supermajority. It worked, and we went in and we fixed it. Did we, did we fix it? I don't think so. I don't think so. But putting that aside, I mean, I agree with you. I think it's, it's a good thing. It's just, like I said, in between, maybe we're going to have to tweak a little bit of the verbiage. I think it needs it.
We can look at it and ask questions, do whatever we want, and come back with modification. I don't see that being a problem, but I think moving forward, it's important to go back and fix something that a mistake was made in 2003. We even have a former council member who got up here and stated that, so...
I agree. I mean, the way I'm looking at this, we're taking something that was pulled out in 2005, and we're, three. That's what I thought originally. Somebody told me five.
Yeah, it was reviewed in '05 and '06, but it never went anywhere.
Okay, but my point is that we're taking something that's how old now? Sixteen years old? And we're trying to reinsert it. And at that time, we didn't think it was the right idea. We pulled it out. I feel strongly about protecting the people out here. I don't wanna upset somebody's life who's been raising rabbits their whole life or whatever it is. I mean, I want protections. That's why I keep saying, it doesn't affect the farmers. It doesn't affect the people that are doing it today. Now, I don't know how you can insert language to stop what went on next door here and not affect people that have one acre of land. I mean, that's what's going on there. So, I think we do need to work on this a little bit more and not just try to pass something to keep it moving forward.
I agree.
We done? Call the question, please.
Councilmember Hartman?
No.
Councilmember Schroder?
No.
Councilmember Fissa Kelly?
No.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion does not pass.
Now, I keep hearing it's dead. This shouldn't go away.
No, no.
This is just LPA.
I got it.
But, but because it's dead here, it's dead at the next part.
Right, no, I get it.
We gotta finish the LPA meeting. There's minutes.
Yep. Do you want to make a move? Make a motion to approve the LPA minutes for September, December, October, and December again, eighteen and seven.
I second it.
All right. Any public comments related to our minutes? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Call the question.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fissa Kelly?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes. All right. The LPA is adjourning and will go into the town council meeting. Roll call, please.
Mayor McKay?
Here.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Here.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yeah, here.
Councilmember Fissa Kelly?
Here.
Councilmember Schroder?
Here.
We have a call on there.
All right. If we could please stand for the pledge all over again. All right.
Mayor, the next items on the agenda are two waiver plots that are quasi-judicial. Also, we'll move number ten, which is one that you all just discussed, tied to five because technically it should be considered quasi-judicial as well. So, although people were just sworn in, if there's anyone new who has not been sworn in who wishes to speak on item three, four, or ten on the agenda, if you could please raise your hands to be sworn in. Do you understand? Anyone speaking on three, four, or ten on the agenda needs to be sworn in.
Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Thank you. Russell, if you could... Mayor, are you okay with moving the...
Yeah, I'm fine with moving it.
All right, there's a resolution for item three. Let's start with that. Russell, if you could read that into the record.
This is a waiver of plat. So, this is a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving waiver of plat application number WP-23-18 to subdivide approximately 4.41 net acres of a property into two lots of 2.15 and 2.26 net acres, generally located on Old Sheridan Street, approximately 600 feet east of Politee Trail, legally described as the south half of Track 51, less the south 60 feet for road purposes of the Everglade Sugar and Land Company subdivision, located in Section 2, Town Street 51 South, Range 40 East, according to the plat thereof, recorded in Plat Book 2, page 39, of the Dade County, Florida, public records. Said lands now lying, being, and situate in Broward County, Florida, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute any and all documents necessary to properly effectuate the intent of this resolution, providing for recordation and providing an effective date.
Thank you. The order of proof on this will start with the staff, then to the applicant, council questions, and public, and back to you, too. Snyder, please state your name for the record that you've been sworn in and that you understand why you're here.
For the record, my name is Michael Snyder, excuse me, with offices located at 4,000 Hollywood Boulevard, Suite 455 South, Hollywood, Florida. I was not sworn in. I think it's the attorney I need to be.
Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Michael Cohen didn't think he needed to be here.
Mr. Snyder...
My wife will appreciate that comment.
Did you read the staff report?
Yes, I did.
Are you okay with the staff conditions?
I am, and I will say for the record, it was a pleasure working with Mr. Cadem throughout this process.
Thank you. Jeff, if I could please have you enter the staff report and give a synopsis.
So entered. So entered. This is 4.41 acres on 13401 Old Sheridan. This would be a longitudinal split. In other words, both flats are gonna front the street, meet the acreage requirements for the rural ranches district. They're gonna meet all the other requirements. No non-conformities are being created. In fact, there are two ponds on the property, and the property lines jogged so that they're entirely contained on one property. So, they need all of the acreage, net acreage requirements. They've gone through all the, all the requirements of the process, and we recommend approval.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Snyder, would you like, do you have any questions up here?
No, only that I was using the word "come through all the hoops" instead of "requirements," but other than that, I agree with a hundred percent.
Do you have anything else to add?
Yes, just my presentation.
Please.
I represent the property owner who's here with me tonight at 13401 Old Sheridan Street. He is a resident for some time here in the town. We did go to great extent to fulfill all the requirements to make sure that each parcel on its own stood on its own without any requirements ready, variances or setbacks. They're independent. We spent a lot of time going through this to make sure that that's okay, everything's okay. So, we believe that we have fulfilled all the requirements of the staff as so stated, and therefore, we effectively request approval of the waiver of plat to subdivide two lots, meeting all the requirements of the town.
Thank you. Does any member of the town council have any questions of Jeff or the applicant? Seeing none, we're gonna open it up to the public, for public comment. Any member of the public may speak on this item that must be sworn in, state their name, address, for the record. If it's sworn in, they have two minutes. Anyone wish to speak on this waiver of plat? Seeing none, public discussion closed. Jeff, do you have any concluding remarks? Mr. Snyder, do you have any concluding remarks?
No.
Back to the council for consideration. Once again, it's quasi-judicial. Question is whether or not the applicant has shown by competent substantial evidence that the waiver of plat should be granted. It requires a five oh vote of the town council. Mayor?
Yep, I'm good. Anybody have any questions up here? No? Nobody has any questions? Okay, call the question.
Just to confirm, I didn't hear any, you all noticed. Were there any disclosures?
No.
No.
Do you need a motion?
No, good motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, call the question. Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fissa Kelly?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yeah.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Russell. Russell, if you could please read the next item into the record.
This is a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving waiver of plat application number WP-22-18 to subdivide approximately 4.6 net acres of property into two lots of approximately 2.3 net acres each, generally located on the south side of Southwest 50th Court, approximately 1,800 feet west of Mather Boulevard, Southwest 178th Avenue, legally described as the east half, the west half of Tracks 29 and 30, and Section 31, Town Street 50 South, Range 40 East, according to the plat of Florida Fruitlands Company subdivision number one, as recorded in Plat Book 2, page 17, of the public records of Miami Dade County, Florida. Said lands now situate in Broward County, Florida, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute any and all documents necessary to properly effectuate the intent of this resolution, providing for recordation and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Applicant, if you could please state your name for the record, your address, and if you've been sworn in.
Good evening. My name is Iris Romero, and the property address is 18300 Southwest 50th Court, Southwest Ranches, Florida.
And you've been sworn in?
Pardon?
And you've been sworn in?
Yes, I have.
And you're the applicant?
Yes.
You understand, you reviewed the staff report?
Yes, sir.
Do you accept the conditions of that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I'm gonna turn it over to Jeff for the presentation, just like we did the last one. Jeff?
Thank you. We'll enter the report into the record. Very simple, 4.6 net acres being divided into two lots of 2.3 net acres each. It's an undeveloped parcel, so there's no internal setback or other development standards we have to be worried about that would be affected by this subdivision. Both lots are gonna have access to Southwest 50th Court, meets all the requirements of the code, and we recommend approval.
Thank you. Does the applicant have any questions of Jeff?
No, sir.
Do you would like to make a presentation?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay, please.
So, the presentation, as we'll say, is a 4.6 net acres, and we're trying to get this subdivided into two parcels of 2.3 acres each. We've prepared all the documentation necessary, and we've complied with all the requirements, and I would respectfully request for this to be granted.
Thank you. Does any member of the town council have any questions of the applicant or staff? Seeing none, turn it over to the public. Does any member of the public wish to speak on this item? If you could please come forward, state your name for the record, your address, and if you've been sworn in. You have two minutes.
Matthew Tantian, 18310 Spring Road. I haven't been sworn in.
Could you please raise your right hand, sir? Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. My property is immediately adjacent to this on the west side. I wasn't, I'm not clear, where is the ingress for the aft property? What side does, I guess it's gonna be a forward property and an aft property? No. How's it gonna be divided?
Right down the middle.
I didn't see a drawing. It's gonna be split in two long, skinny parcels?
Correct.
Oh, really? Well, then I guess I don't have any objections.
Seeing no more... Seeing no more public comment, public comments closed. Jeff, do you have any concluding remarks?
No.
Does the applicant have any concluding?
No, sir.
Mayor, for you, for a motion and deliberation.
Any additional questions up here?
Once, once again, for the record, has anyone had any export day communications concerning this one?
No. Motion to approve?
Second.
Call the question, please. Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fissa Kelly?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonski?
Yeah.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
Russell, if you could please read item 10 into the record.
This is an ordinance of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending the Town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code, the ULDC, Article 45, entitled Agricultural and Rural Districts, Section 045-050, uses permitted to require minimum plot sizes exceeding 2.3 net acres for crop raising and plant nurseries, and 4.5 net acres for fish breeding, providing for codification, providing for conflict, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Mayor, council, this comes to you with a recommendation of denial from the local planning agency. We incorporate by reference all the testimony given by the residents and staff, so it's back to you for deliberation, comments, questions, but the public already commented. Any comment?
Motion to approve?
Second.
You did say all the requirements were met. Did you?
Yes, I did.
Okay. I wasn't talking to you, Keith. I was talking to Jeff.
It's okay.
All right, open up a public comment?
No, sorry.
Okay. All right. Call the question.
Councilmember Hartman?
Still no.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fissa Kelly?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonski?
Yeah.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Excuse me, Russ, hold on. I'm not clear on what I'm voting on right now.
This is the ordinance version of the item that just came before you from the local planning agency that was voted down 3-2, and now it's voted to approve 4-1.
What? Let's make this one clear.
Yeah, let's make this clear to Bob.
I mean, I just voted against this a few minutes ago because we said we wanted to spend more time to discuss, further review the language. If I vote yes, everything we said goes out the window, or am I misunderstanding?
Again, the vote is a little inconsistent. That's why I mentioned it. But this item does require two readings. So one thing that you have done in the past, and it's totally up to the council, is you could adopt it on first reading, send it to the Complan Board to get input, and then bring it back to you with any changes, and then you will have satisfied the requirement on first reading, if you believe that an ordinance is necessary. Not, you could just kill it completely and...
Right. I don't want to kill it. I think it should go to the Complan Board for further discussion and further deliberation by us, once the language has been straightened out. So Russell, how do I change my vote?
No, no, your vote on the LPA...
No, here.
Right. What you would ask, because obviously you voted no, so it, it, let's consider it dead. So if you'd like to make a new motion now, because that motion failed...
Right.
Technically, even though it looks like a pass, it failed 4 to 1. As a result, if you'd like to make a motion now, it's ripe under Robert's rules to do so. So you could make a motion to approve, subject to it going back to the Complan Board for pick a timeframe, and then coming back to the council for further deliberation on second reading.
You need to open up public comment to complete the understanding. Okay. So I will make a motion to bring this back. Motion to approve. I don't, what would be an appropriate date certing on this?
You don't need to make a date certing, but what you would need to do is motion to approve...
Okay.
But sending it to, subject to sending it to the Complan Board for review, and bringing it back to the council no later than 30 days, 60 days?
Good.
Just so it's not sitting there forever.
Got it. Thank you. Russell, like he said...
How much time would you, how much time would you want?
90 days, is that reasonable? I'm hearing 30 from the audience.
We determine what's reasonable in your motion.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we want some time with this, and in light of the fact that we're working on the nursery ordinance, we probably want it at first. So I'll say 90. Public comment.
I second it.
Keith, thanks for the help.
Call the question. Okay, so we have a motion to approve, subject to Complan review, and bringing it back to council in 90 days.
Correct.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fissa Kelly?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonski?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
The quasi judicial portion of the agenda is over. We're now going into public comment. As you know, the Town Council rules is 30 minutes for cop, public comment.
Three minutes, that's it.
No, 30 minutes total for public comment. Yeah. 30 minutes total for public comment. You have more speakers than 30 minutes with a lot, so you have two choices. Either one, as you've done in the past, reduce the speaker total to two minutes per speaker and get through public comment now, or be given three minutes, and then after the 30 minutes, move everyone to the end of the agenda. So it's here for whatever council wants to do. Got any thoughts, anyone?
I think we should just reduce it, have it now. They don't want to sit here waiting all night.
Okay. First speaker, Seek Society of Florida. Second speaker, John Eastman. Third speaker, Cheryl.
There are a couple of other things I need to address, Keith. You want me to address them?
Yeah, you come there.
Okay. So a couple of things. In the past, we've had issues with personal attacks on residents or people, and it's happened, and it's apparently continuing to happen. So we're not going to allow that moving forward, and we haven't. So if anybody's doing a personal attack on anyone, we're going to ask you to stop or, you know, leave, or whatever the case may be. The other thing is, we have an issue, McBride, I just want to give you a heads up, there's been a gag order or whatever, so you're not going to be able to speak on the litigation issues moving forward.
I'm just a motion. I'm just a motion that hasn't been approved. I just, just a motion.
All right, I'm just giving you a heads up, so I don't want to say you weren't told.
Seek Society, thank you.
Go right ahead, sorry.
All right. Greetings, Town of Southwest Ranches Council and townspeople present here today. On behalf of the Seek Society of Florida, we would like to invite all of you to our first annual A Race for Unity and Diversity 5K event. It will be held at the Seek Society of Florida Temple on Saturday, March 30, 2019, at 7:30 a.m. The purpose of this event is to promote awareness and acceptance within our community, all while supporting a healthy lifestyle. With roughly two to three weeks left before the event, we want to let you know just how much support we have behind our initiative. Local businesses and organizations, such as the Indian Regional and Cultural Center, the Noor Center, South Florida Hindu Temple, the New Hope Church, Sunshine Kids Club, Temple Beth Emmett, and Publix, that's just to name a few, have all shown outpouring support, and we cannot be even more grateful. And of course, the town has provided an unimmeasurable amount of help in making this event possible, and we greatly appreciate your help in this as well. All in all, we have garnered support from a large portion of the community around us, and we want all of you to voice your support by coming out and inviting your family and friends to this 5K. We want to be able to benefit the town's college scholarship fund in an unprecedented way, and we need all the help we can to make that possible. Being the first of its kind in the greater Fort Lauderdale area, we could not be more excited, and we hope you are, too. We have placed flyers in the front and the back, so please feel free to take them, as they have details regarding the event, as well as our sponsors and supporters. Thank you.
To keep it in order of signing in, John Eastman's next. John passes. And I apologize just because of the way it's written. Cheryl looks like Vander Heiden, and if I pronounce it wrong, I truly apologize.
I believe she looked.
Okay. Next speaker is Craig Vander Heiden.
He left.
Okay. Mr. McBride?
Brad McBride, 13851 East Palomino Drive. I'm not here tonight to speak about the barn or the fence that's being litigated in court, or that the town has threatened to tear down. I have confidence in my attorneys and that the law of the land will prevail in our favor. I'm here today because there is a 4,000-square-foot factory that's manufacturing fish tanks across the street from us in our rural ranches neighborhood. A 4,000-square-foot commercial manufacturing facility in our neighborhood. I would trade a lot of these people with the landscape and the nurseries for the commercial manufacturing facility. You know, so why is the town so focused on my fence and barn but refuses to enforce the code against Jerry Calabrese's property? This is my third complaint about a commercial manufacturing facility that is just going on deaf ears. Actually, they've got to put a commercial dumpster out there that's blatantly admitting the operation exists but looking the other way. This is called selective enforcement. You don't have to take my word for it, but the latest complaint provides, you know, Keith Poliakoff, you know, touting the commercial manufacturing facility here in our neighborhood. Doug McKay, touting the commercial 5,000-square-foot tank heading to Maryland at Southwest Ranches Town Hall, okay? Keith Poliakoff, Sea Visions, 12,000 saltwater tank can hold two hunkback whales. Okay? You can also ask the mayor, ask the town, that you're getting paid $550,000 a year, Keith, to litigate, to litigate things that are no good.
Mayor, if I could...
Go ahead.
Point of order.
Hold on. One second, please.
We just had all this a minute ago, and...
I'm talking about a commercial manufacturing facility, Doug McKay, that you're required to enforce the county code.
Excuse me, sir. You were warned in the beginning.
But I'm...
You were warned in the beginning, please.
No personal attack.
This is his own...
I'm not going to sit here and listen to bashing. Okay.
Sea Visions, Doug McKay, sea visions at, Doug McKay at seavisions.com. You know, here's just multiple...
Your time's up, sir.
I get it.
Thank you.
You know, I just asked that you do your job and stop the selective enforcement by Doug McKay and Keith Poliakoff.
Thank you, Mr. McBride.
Ms. Del Risco and Omar Chavez, again, I apologize, but it's a little messy. Anyone? Okay. Mr. Lasky?
I don't think there'll be any problem following up on what we talked about three sessions ago. I don't think you guys understand. It's the activity on the property. So if a guy's selling fertilizer, if a guy's selling the tractor, if a guy's selling shovels and all this other crap I see going up and down the road here, you audit the business. You audit the business, and where does the income come from? It ain't plants. It's all you simply have to do. If they've got nursery trucks parked there and they're collecting money every month, you know, that's a problem. You start adding up those numbers, he's not a farm anymore. That's how they do it in northern part of the state, if you don't know that. I've read this stuff. I'm telling you, just think about it. How to achieve what you want to do the right way? Go after the business activity on the property and itemize everything out. The guy should have a business tax license, and he should be filing a report with the Department of Revenue, and he's got to show taxable sales, non-taxable sales. Then you can go in there and verify that information, or probably they would do it for you. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lasky. Mr. Parker, followed by Richard Graham Charter? Next speaker will be Michelle McBride.
Again, good evening. I'm coming to you to inform the council, the mayor, and the attorney that Fort Lauderdale International Airport is going to increase the number of overflights in Southwest Ranches effective June 3. There are 800 flights departing and arriving into Fort Lauderdale. There's going to be runway construction taking place on the north runway, so all flights coming into Fort Lauderdale will be diverted into the south runway, and that's going to increase the frequency of flights up to 400 flights daily. I went to the airport noise, I'm sorry, I went to the Airport Noise Abatement Committee meeting on March 11, and this was the information that I came back with. 400 daily flights will be coming over Southwest Ranches, and this will pretty much decimate our environment and also the, our peace of, peace of mind, quality of life. I think I would like the council to consider making a motion to create an airport advisory board, so that we can get qualified people on that board that can address some of these issues with the Airport Noise Abatement Committee. I know John Eastman is on that board, but I would be willing to sit on that board, too, because I do have experience in the airline industry. I used to work for American Airlines in management. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McBride, followed by Tony Brown, who I think already spoke, David Kozinski, and the final speaker is Debbie Green. No, it goes in by order of signing, so you're up. You pass? You can pass, there's nothing wrong with that.
Pass, but not to go later. They pass on not to speak at all.
If you'd like to speak, you have to speak now.
Good evening. I'm here tonight along with my husband as law-abiding, tax-paying, horse-riding citizens of Southwest Ranches community. We love our horses and are avid riders. We support anything equestrian, including all-approved horse trails. But everyone here should know that this is the third reason that the town has taken a problem with our front fence. I know because we've sat through all the hearings, paid for the attorney's fees, and the court reporters. I have all the transcripts, which claim first it's for an easement, then a clear zone. You should have been there for that. The town had an engineer claiming our fence, which has been there for more than 40 years, is a life safety issue, and now we hear it's because of a horse trail? Now which is it? East Palomino, nor any other street in the ranches, can truly be considered a real horse trail. In fact, it's more like an obstacle course. I wonder how many of you have actually ridden on top of a horse through these streets? Even where the fence lines are set back, you've got trees and mailboxes and meter covers making your path impassable. Real estate signs, you can't go over and through those. And how about trash cans and recycling? Two-time... Sorry. Anyhow, are you trying to convince us that we have dedicated horse trails on certain days of the week? Are we going to tell the landscaping trucks or visitors that they can't park on the horse trail? Has any one of you ever tried to go around the bulk trash piles that go out on Friday and get picked up on Monday?
Time's up, sorry.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown? I don't see him anymore. Tony Brown? No, he left. David Kozinski, and the final speaker, Debbie, you're up.
Good evening. David Kozinski, 6411 Politee Trail, speaking on behalf of the Sunshine Ranches Homeowners Association. Just want to make the announcement that on the 27th, we're going to be having our elections for the new Board of Directors. Just basic announcement to that. And then I've been approached to ask for a contribution from the Sunshine Ranches Homeowners' Association. Our maximum without a quorum is $200, but to make the contribution toward the 5K run and I'm going to ask the board for the full 200. Thank you.
Debbie, you're up.
Debbie Green, 5201 Southwest 199th Avenue. I just want, just the lighting issue out here, just I'm on a couple of the advisory boards and so when we leave at like 8 o'clock at night and it's really dark, I know we've discussed this for a few years now, or a couple of years. When you leave out of here and you go to make the left, it's really scary. Like you have to go really slow to make sure that you're on the other side of the median. So I volunteered in our last, one of our advisory boards that I would say something during public comment just to bring it back up. I'm sure you're all aware of it, so I'm sure you've all left later in the evening as well. So we don't know if maybe it's some reflective paint or something that will pick up from the headlights so at the nighttime you can feel confident that you're on the other side of Griffin Road when you turn left. Thanks.
Thank you. Over to board reports, Mayor.
Board reports, any board reports?
Okay, Parks Board. We made a motion to, for me to come to the council and see if we can get the support. I brought it up at Astronauts Foundation that we had volunteers that are qualified in the cleaning and clearing of land and ponds and stuff. And Rolling Oaks' pond is almost nonexistent. It has two large water retention areas, let's say, and there's so much silt in them now that the water, when it rains really hard, makes it almost to the concrete circular drive. Well, we know there's no funds in the town to do much for the parts unless we get grants or something of that nature and cleaning that out is about as low as you can get on the priority list because we have a lot of parks that, in fact, we have two that we've done nothing to. So the grant money will definitely go to those parts for trying to comply as much as we can with making them, at least we're making an effort to trying to bring them into compliance. So what we talked about was volunteering. We used to volunteer a lot. In fact, Freddie knows, Freddie built pretty much himself the first town hall we had, which was a bunch of trailers, and volunteers did a lot of that work. And so we've got volunteers that are volunteering to do this and I did not ask the town to put any money in this. I asked the Astronautic Foundation if they would at least pay for gas or whatever we need. And they said, yeah, but I had to come here and find out if you would support the volunteers cleaning. We are not going to dig it out. We are going to clean it and remove the silt and the invasive... Like, there's Malaluka, Australian pines, and the worst is hollies are really growing around the one terribly, the bigger one. But it will drain the land once we get all that silt out of there. And I did one myself that had been about the same time, 1952, and that's about when McCall built those. And that whole property was flooding and now it doesn't flood at all. All the water goes in there. We have fish, we have birds coming in now. I mean, it really is a massive change. So I need your support if we can go ahead.
I'm in support. I don't know about the rest of you, but I'm in support.
Yeah, absolutely. The volunteers, they can sign the waivers and they can, you know, the work is supervised and, yeah, I don't see anybody who wouldn't. I mean, you know, I'm not putting words in anybody's mouth here.
Well, if we're going to do that...
I already said it last meeting.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that you understand, we're not digging or creating a bigger or deeper. All we're doing is cleaning it out and cleaning it up so it can be better maintained and we'll get good drainage.
So what is the money actually?
The money will come from the Astronautic Foundation.
What is the money actually going for?
Probably few more than anything because, and we have to get it together. I mean, this was thrown at us at the Astronautic Foundation. People said, yeah, you know, we'll volunteer. But people say they'll volunteer and then we have to get down with the nitty-gritty of it. But, you know, which came first, the chicken or the egg? I have to come here and get your support and then go back and make sure we can do it.
Well, legally, where do we stand on that? Because we've asked to use volunteers. In the past, you're not a legal guy. I'm asking the legal. Like on the building for painting or whatever. Well, we can't do that, we're a contract town. So where do we stand there?
We always allowed it, especially in the first town hall ever, but they did have to sign waivers. I think this current building was not done because, if I remember, Chris Russo, was it Chris back then? I think it was, I think it was Chris wanted to make sure that it was done by professionals so that he could point the finger at someone if something went wrong. But yes, volunteers is fully supportable and as long as they sign the waiver, I believe.
Gary, you better make sure you have rubber boots on when you're doing that stinky wet. I'm in favor.
What are you looking for, hip waders and chainsaws?
Yeah, uh-huh. No, really, we just really needed a drag line in there and maybe a dose of that kind of stuff, yeah. No, you use drag line with a bucket.
I was thinking simple stuff.
Yeah, and then we'll need a truck to haul off any debris that we can't disperse into the, you know, like silt.
We'll have to call Lee Lester.
Well, that's who was at the meeting. And I, nationally, you know, I mean, this is on Comcast and Lee will be shocked, but his wife was there and she volunteered. So anyway, I just need your support. I don't know if you have to make a motion or you can just say, yeah.
Yeah, we'll direct Andy to take care of it.
I think you have our consent.
Yes.
Now let's get started on the painting of this building here.
There you go. Volunteers.
Steve Reitker is chairman of the comp board. Just a couple of things. One is, we are happy as a board to take back the ordinance that you all discussed tonight. We'll definitely take a look at that. I would encourage you all, if you can, to note the concerns that you have with the ordinance and send it to administration that can then properly forward it on to the committee so that we are able to address those in a proper way. We want to make sure that we handle this as quickly and as concisely as we can and by you all forwarding those concerns that you have, that would be very helpful to us. The second thing is, I wanted to express the board's appreciation for y'all's patience. We've been working on the nursery and landscape maintenance company ordinance for longer than we thought we would, but we're making good progress. It's actually been a great experience because as we've dug into it more, there's a lot to it and we want to make sure we get it right. So we're continuing that process. It's a great committee and I'm hopeful that it's not going to be too long before it comes back to you, but when it comes back to you, it'll be done right. So, thank you.
Any additional board reports? Seeing none, all right, we're back to us. Councilmember comments. Who'd like to go first? Gary, go ahead.
I'll go first. Usually I'm pretty quick on stuff and run through things. Today is not going to be the case. Have a lot to discuss and some events that recently have affected me and I'm going to bring that to light and move forward from there. First, let me get some of the announcements out of the way. We just had a hazmat at the park, was very successful and Andy, I have a comment I need to make to you and I keep forgetting it. If you could, we could talk about it later on that. Nothing dramatic. The Seek Society Run, Walk, in my case, Crawl, the 30th at 6:30 a.m. It's going to go through Green Meadows. It's going to be a nice thing. All the proceeds go to the Education Advisory Board. And by the way, we had the barn dance last week and it was a lot of fun. Everybody had a great time, so, and it's all going to the kids. It's really good. And the food was excellent. Outback did a fantastic job. I want to thank them for their donation on what they supplied. Bob, I'm not going to talk about the Country Estates barbecue, but you can when, if you wish, okay? And I want to announce that the townwide Rolling Oaks Annual Easter Egg Hunt is on the 7th. That's Sunday morning. It's at 11 a.m. is a light breakfast and at 12 o'clock is the actual egg hunt at the barn. We've got a record 6,000 eggs this year. We ran out and I can tell you that all 6,000 are in my living room with a couple on the, with a couple out on the, a couple cases out on the patio.
What was that date again?
So...
Do you want to know the date?
April 7th. April 7th. And now, on a more serious note, I want to get into something that's recently happened to me and I'm going to ask for everybody's indulgence up here, which is going to be lengthy. And I'm reading from prepared statements and I would like to go into the record and I'm going to speak very clearly in the mic. I want to make sure there's no misunderstanding on anything I'm saying here. Okay, allow me to explain some recent and very troubling events that have occurred to myself and our town. Several days ago, I received a notice of an alleged election violation from the state of Florida. First, let me state for the record that I have been waived my right to confidentiality to the state in order to immediately address this false, baseless, malicious, and unfounded attack taken against myself. A resident by the name of Stephanie Cowan, who lives in Country Estates, filed a violation against me for failing to file a termination report by September 20th, 2018. The complaint is 100% incorrect and inaccurate and it could have been answered with a simple phone call to the clerk or a records request to the town clerk. There is no violation here. Also, the town is not required to post these reports on the website and it does so out of courtesy. I have to ask myself, what is going on? This was so far out of left field, I can't even imagine why. I realize there are born troublemakers who get pleasure out of seeking the misery of others. However, it does not make sense to me since I have no dealings with this Stephanie Cowan. I have to think that maybe there's more to this than a despicable action on her part. I firmly believe that there could have been a council member participation or knowledge in this underhanded nonsense that was filed two weeks ago. To what end is purely speculation, in my opinion. I hope this is not some residue from the last election or has anything to do with future decisions that have to be made by the council. These kind of tactics are petty, underhanded, and unnecessary, plus they are juvenile. If there's any participation from the dais, it will eventually come out and it always does when bad people do bad things. If Stephanie Cowan is a pawn in some game up here, I feel sorry for her. This is pathetic and our actions reflect this. The town now has to incur legal fees to help answer the complaint to the Elections Commission, a needless waste of time and money that could easily have been answered had Stephanie Cowan, whom I met once at an advisory board meeting after being introduced by Mary Gay, and probably had a high welcome-to-the-town type greeting, otherwise I have no knowledge of this person other than being a resident of the town and appointed to advisory boards, which I voted for, by the way. Stephanie Cowan's recent actions have shown that she is more interested in being a troublemaker than an asset to the community. In other words, we don't need that kind of help. It only serves to divide us, not unite us. Perhaps that is her skill set, but that is strictly my opinion. Stephanie Cowan, I feel, should not be able to serve in the town's best interest based upon her actions. The town now has to address this paperwork issue with real money in the form of legal fees and town management time. The truly sad part about this false complaint is that this question could have been answered with a simple phone call. This resident, in my opinion, lacks the character and integrity to advise the council on planning decisions. This is not a beneficial skill set for our town. Her experiences are obviously of underhanded type stuff and we pride ourselves on always having open discussion and adhering to the sunshine law. I truly think Stephanie Cowan would not be an asset to advise the town in any way, shape, or form, in my opinion. And at this time, I want to make a motion to make changes to the Comprehensive Planning Board and the Drainage Infrastructure Board that they change that we remove Stephanie Cowan from those boards. And I would appreciate a second to discuss this pretty important matter.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
I'd like to go next. I had no knowledge. I knew nothing about this. I find it basically deplorable. We're supposed to be a tight-knit area and if you got a difference with someone, doesn't matter who they are, you should have discussed it. Like Gary said, it would have been done if she had made just a simple phone call to the town administrator and inquired. That was wrong. It was wrong on her part. That is not acceptable. And I don't know if she's willing to do it, but I think she owes him and everybody else a big apology. I think it's terrible. And I apologize for my residents taking action against one of us when, like you said, a simple phone call would have done it. She would have got the information that she needed. And I am truly sorry for that, that you have to go through this.
I can't hear you.
I'm talking in it, Vinny. I can't talk any louder. I apologize for that. Like I said, that was unacceptable. It's terrible. I can't believe anybody would do that to you. Gary's been in this community, this town, for more years than I can count. I watched his kids from, oh, is it Kathy? Kindergarten, first grade? Anytime you needed anything, anytime you wanted anything, they were always there, always. That's terrible. So you might want to think about things when you have issues with your neighbors or friends or things don't go right, you know, communication. And we have open door policy here. There is no reason why she should not have called and spoke to the town minister or assistant town administrator. We, this is unacceptable, Gary, and I truly feel bad.
Thank you for saying that, Councilmember Schroeder.
On another note...
Let's back up a minute. There was a motion and a second on the table.
Oh, that's right, okay, go ahead.
To remove this person from the advisory board.
I would tell you that I'm not a party to it, didn't know about it. I apologize that happened to you. I think that was obviously poor judgment and poor call on her part and apparently it could have been easily resolved and fixed and why it wasn't, beyond question on that. I don't know that because she made a bad character call and a bad action that that calls her to be removed from the board. We've had, that has no, she is an attorney and I think she can still have decent input and contribution into the boards that she's on. She is a fairly new resident and she definitely has health issues herself, aside from all that. But, you know, I think she did, made a bad decision and took a ridiculous action and uncalled for. So I apologize and don't condone it in any way, but I would tell you, I don't think because of it that she should be removed from board. I mean, we've, we've been through other issues, which I'm not going to get into related to boards, but hearing her there, she hasn't taken an action in a capacity related to a board or anything of that nature, that caliber. She hasn't been on the board for very long and so I don't think as a counteraction, a tit-for-tat that we should take that action. That's just my opinion.
Quick comment. So Gary goes to all these meetings all the time. Gary, as long as I can remember, is at those meetings month in and month out. I just want to ask you to consider, if this were you, would you feel comfortable sitting in that meeting every month from now on, looking at the person who's falsely accused you of things? Just think about it. I wouldn't be comfortable.
I'll give you a counter to that, that I didn't feel too good about. We set up here on this dais and three out of five voted to remove someone and the very next meeting they was put back on. That wasn't a slap in the face?
I didn't vote for that.
I understand that, but I'm just giving you a different example. Yeah, okay.
Well, now I got to jump in. I think it's maybe a little bit strong to remove somebody that, you know, you got to ask yourself, why did she want on the boards? She's fairly new to the town? I don't know. I don't know when she...
You know, I think everybody here is missing one very, very important point. This is not something where you pick up a phone and you say, hey, I want to file This is not something where you pick up a phone and you say, hey, I want to file an election campaign. You have to go through mountains of paperwork and effort to file a complaint. This is not something you just do willy-nilly because I don't like the way the guy looks or something like that. This is some, this is something where you have to put a lot of thought process into it, and you have to sign affidavits and get notarized signatures. There's a lot involved in this, and now there's a lot involved in this to undo all of this.
I get all that.
And, you know, I can't minimize it. There's no minimization here. It's a major deal.
But to be treated...
This is going to take weeks to straighten out, and it's going to involve Keith's resources, Andy's resources, you know, and I just don't think that's the kind of person we want, and I think we need to send a very clear message.
I don't think we have the right to alienate people in our town either because they made mistakes. There's been a lot of mistakes. There's been people that have come to our board meetings, and I know this because I was there, and they said, because the way they were treated, they would never come back again, never. Now, you know, I have to try to treat them, and do I say we're a little bit better? Well, we sit up higher than everybody, but that doesn't mean we're better.
No, this is something pretty serious.
Yes.
I mean, this isn't a willy-nilly thing.
Serious isn't even touching on it. I think it's horrible.
Whose appointments is she to the two boards?
Andy, can you answer that?
Yeah, on the Comprehensive Plan Board, she's an at-large appointee. On the Drainage and Infrastructure Board, she's Mayor McKay's appointee.
Well, it's like, do you get another chance? Is someone going to, well, I'm sure someone is going to talk to her, but I don't know. I'd have to think about that one.
I don't know. I'm dealing with Tallahassee now, and I'm dealing with other things that none of you are dealing with. I don't quite see it your way.
Let me ask you a different question. If her actions were unfounded, why is it a difficult fix?
I don't understand what you mean by fix.
Okay, I don't know the issue. I don't, I just know she filed some kind of complaint, I heard about you, and for not doing something. If what she complained about is unfounded and there's nothing to it, why is it going to be difficult to fix? I don't understand that if everything was done properly and done right, why is it an issue and going to take so long to fix the problem?
I want to ask Keith.
Maybe Keith can answer that question.
Keith, yeah, can you?
Sure. Because Gary has asked the state for a waiver, and they granted his waiver of confidentiality, I'm happy to address it. She filed a complaint basically stating that Councilmember Jablonski failed to file his termination report at the end of the account, at the end of the election. Termination report's really just a piece of paper saying...
Closing it.
Closing your account.
Right.
Councilmember Jablonski filed it five weeks prior to the deadline date of when it needed to be filed. Russell posts most of the campaign filings online, but because of the fact that Gary was elected unopposed, Russell just didn't file or post it online. Everything was in Town Hall. It was sitting in Town Hall. He just never posted it. The law doesn't require him to post it, but he posted so that, you know, avoiding records requests and the like, so that people could just go to the town's website and see it. Not a requirement at all to post it. So, in response to the complaint, which has really turned into a complaint against the town because everything was filed and the question was whether or not it wasn't posted, we had to draft an affidavit for Russell to file, which basically confirms the date stamp on the document itself, saying that it was properly tendered to the town five weeks prior to the deadline, and it had to be submitted with a response package that went out, I think today you sent it, or today or tomorrow, that it was sent out. At that point, once the state receives it, it's going to take them a while to determine whether or not there's probable cause. I know of campaign challenges, election challenges from that November that were submitted in November, and still have not even been reviewed by the state for probable cause here. So, as a result of that, you're looking at four to six months of an open ethics complaint, election complaint against Councilmember Jablonski until it can be closed out.
But the truth of the matter is, it's basically already addressed. It's just a long time, and it's going to stay open till which time they can hear it.
That's correct.
Okay.
The complaint remains open against him until it's closed. My guess, because you're asking, is it will remain open between four and six months. My suggestion on this, for anyone who knows this individual, is maybe if she came to Town Hall and saw the filing, maybe she would be willing to immediately notify the state that she was wrong and withdraw her complaint.
Would we have, would we be in any violation if I talked to her myself, Bob, any of us, saying, you need to fix this now?
That's not a violation.
Well, that's what she needs to do.
What her, his point is, you can do that.
She's not exactly the, and I don't want to use the wrong word, as far as a lawyer, she didn't do her homework. She didn't do it, okay? But that's what she needs to do, in my opinion. What do you think? I think she needs to come here, write a letter, whatever she has to do, resend it, whatever she has to say, and get it done now, so it will close it out immediately.
How does this sound? Somewhere is a happy compromise. Since she's in a large employment on a comprehensive planning board, we remove her from that. She serves on the drainage board at Mayor McKay's behest. Keep her on that. She's your anchor, and she immediately goes to the state and withdraws.
I wouldn't call her my anchor. I would call, tell you...
I wouldn't want, in my opinion...
Just because she's my appointment. Listen, I'm not disagreeing with you, but, you know, I'm not condoning her actions or what she did. Wasn't aware of it, didn't know anything about it till way after the fact, but...
Well, now you can do something about it.
Listen, I'll make a phone call and see what I can do about it, but I don't think she should be removed off of either board because of it. That's just my opinion.
And we disagree. And we have a second and a motion and a second on the floor.
I don't think his is unreasonable. I think it's a good compromise. I think she should have to try to fix. You can't just say you're sorry all the time. You have to right a wrong. I was taught that when I was little. I'm sorries only go so far. So, this is righting a wrong, okay? That was the dumbest, and I know people who have filed complaints in the past. That was the dumbest thing I ever heard. Really, it was dumb. And, you know, we can sit up here all day long and say, I'm sorry, I apologize. I can't believe that. It's just, but I think that's a good compromise, you know? But she needs to fix this. She needs to come to Town Hall and fix it.
She would need to fix it with the state, and I think she should pay some penalty. And I think she should be removed.
But this is going to set up precedence for every single person who sits on a board. You do understand that. We can't make fish of one and follow of the other. You're not going to do that. I'm not going to do that.
I think we're creating some accountability here.
Yeah.
To be honest with you.
Yeah.
You know, everybody says they're sorry. Anybody can say they're sorry. But you do something like this, there's a consequence to it. I like that compromise.
Says you're sorry, you even lie.
Well, it wasn't like she lied or maliciously did something. She went in with... She went in with undocumented...
I have a compromise on the floor. We can sit here and debate this till we're blue in the face, okay? This is besmirching my reputation. I don't like it one bit.
I can't believe it.
I am very upset about it. I worked very hard for this town, and I asked for nothing in return, other than my name. And I think everybody in here knows that, and I've worked on this since the 1990s.
I make a motion that we accept the compromise.
Second that.
Okay.
I did.
Oh, you did, okay.
Freddie, you got something?
I'm good on it.
Thank you, Freddie.
Hold the motion.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitz Kelly?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonski?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
No.
The motion passes four to one. And that concludes my remarks to the council members, comments.
Okay.
Would like you to go next.
I'll go next.
Bob, go ahead.
Mine will be short, and I don't expect any motions out of it. So, over the last couple of days, I had the experience along with the mayor and Councilmember Schroeder to go up to Tallahassee for Broward Days. They've been before, but this was my first time. It was a very interesting experience. Most of the elected, I shouldn't say most, a lot of the elected officials from Broward County were up there, so we had an opportunity to interact with half the council from Pembroke Pines, you name the cities, a lot of people from Cooper City. It was, it was great, and we worked as a team the whole time as well. We had a resident, Ralph Bellman, along with us, who provided some interesting feedback. If you know Ralph, he's a colorful character, but he made some good contributions. Dee's husband, Mike, came along as well. He provided some feedback, but he's the best Uber driver I know.
He's the Uber driver.
He was the designated driver the whole time. But in addition to it being interesting and fun, our purpose there was to attempt to drive home our key points to the legislators that make the decisions. And the important things that we went to discuss with them and to attempt to influence them were on additional drainage dollars for our town, because as everybody knows, we still have a few places that flood. We looked at additional safety equipment. We're looking at some more guardrails. We had a meeting with the Secretary of Transportation, and I'm not sure if everybody knows, but FDOT has been trying to jam a park-and-ride down our throat in front of that Lamborghini dealer. The only place that was left open, they didn't dig upon. They did it for a reason. They want to put a park-and-ride there. So, we've thought multiple times, we've made it clear, we don't want it, but it keeps popping up. So, in our meeting with the secretary, it was kind of interesting because he was wondering who's got an agenda. We didn't name names, but we're probably going to be meeting with him shortly, right? The important thing is that he appeared to be on our side, which, when you go to the Secretary of Transportation, he can make roads and he can remove them. And I had a much better feeling after this discussion than I've ever had. I mean, Jim and I were over at Sharet over here at the library two weeks ago, and I walked out of there feeling good. Jim didn't, so we continued to push it up there. So, we'll keep on that dog to make sure it doesn't bite us back. We really got to stay on top of that. You know, it was interesting talking to these folks, because we only had them for, what, 20 minutes? But I felt like we got something done with them. But we'll see. We can't now just assume game over, we're going to get what we want, we need to continue following up. So, we're working with Andy to set up some of the follow-up meetings that are necessary to make sure the ball keeps rolling forward. So, to me, that was the key highlights of discussing these various items with the legislators and the secretary. I don't know if you guys have anything to add during your own comments. It was, it was fun, too. Couple other things. Gary had mentioned the Country Estates barbecue. Everybody's invited. It's open to all. It's on 3:30 after the Seek, for me, the Seek crawl, but, you know, it's that afternoon. Theirs ends at about 10 o'clock. We start setting up at 10 o'clock. Party starts at noon, goes to four. We've been having a better and better time every year. Like I said, everybody's invited on March 30th from noon to four out at Country Estates Park. We'll have barbecue, we'll have hot dogs, hamburgers, sides, and lots of family fun. I think it's in this month's bulletin, and we're going to put a sign up there next week. So, those were the key things that I wanted to bring up. But Keith, there's something I do want to, oh, where'd Keith go? There he is. There's something I do want to understand concerning the Calabrese property and rights. I do recall a meeting, and you don't have to answer me now if it takes a few minutes, you know, for you to prepare, but they constantly bring up Calabrese and his illegal 4,000-square-foot factory, and I was here for the meeting when it was discussed, and they, he got a letter of some sort, I don't remember all the details of it, but he has rights that somehow he obtained, and I don't remember all the things that got us there. But in my mind, I want to understand what the difference is here, because if somebody keeps saying he's got no right, I want everybody to know that they're wrong. If he has rights, I mean, if he has no rights, then, you know, let them take action.
I can respond to that. Long time ago now, when he came forward with his coral-growing factory, he did a full presentation to the council. It was disclosed to the council at that time that it was more than just coral-growing, that it was manufacturing tanks and breeding ponds for fish, and he had a lake, and he described his activities. We as staff at that time, and I'm sure you remember those of you who were on it, felt that it exceeded the norms for residential area and recommended denial of his application, okay? My staff report that I drafted then recommended denial. He came before the council, and he gave the entire story about what he did, and the council overturned, which was very unusual at that time, overturned staff's decision and approved his, basically, special exception use for his facility. When doing that, the council also required him to build it as if it was a commercial use, which I also found strange back then. You required him to put in customer parking spots. You required him to put in things that you would have never even dreamed of in a residential setting, and that was done by the council. If you speak to former Mayor Nelson, he'd tell you, you know, he made a mistake in that he didn't realize, you know, what he was doing at that time. The one flaw in the whole process is that the resolution from the approval, which was now dating way back, wasn't as clear as it could have been on what was approved, because the way that Jeff Kadam, and probably remembers it then, drafted the reso, and I looked at it the other day, it speaks about the coral-growing and all that, because staff came to the opinion that the ancillary uses, the tank building and the like, was an ancillary use to the fish, the coral, and everything else that was there, because you can't have coral-growing or fish development without having tanks. So, staff made a determination, Jeff's office, that that was ancillary, and as such, you know, as long as he had fishes and coral, the rest were ancillary use. He's been there now, Jeff, do you remember when that was approved?
Not exactly, but it was the early 2000s.
Yeah, 506, I believe.
Okay, so he's been there now 13 years. There's no one on that street who didn't know what he did. There's no doubt in my mind that the McBrides knew what he did when they bought their residence, because the mayor told me that he spoke to them about it. So, I think that it was disclosed. I think it was known, and according to staff, because I've asked them, every time the McBride submit a complaint, it's investigated accordingly, and we've told them to investigate absolutely everything, that it conforms with what the council's wishes were, and as such, he is vested for that use, whether I agree with it or not, and I can state publicly, I still don't agree with the use, but that was the decision of council.
He's not in compliance.
Yeah, okay. One thing I want to mention about this, because what's happened on Palomino, and I was going to save it for April, but since you brought it up, I just want to bring it up now. What happened on Palomino is they're all now, not just the McBrides, not just the Calabres, not just Zaccle, not Caparrelli, I'm going to excuse his name... just the Calabreese, not just Zacco, not Caparrelli, I'm gonna excuse his name, are all throwing lobs at each other on that entire street. You know, every day, it's this one did this, this one did that, and the code enforcement violations, you know, are, are totally occupying code enforcement's time to a degree that's unheard of. And what the council needs to make a decision at some point as relates to code enforcement in, in these complaints, is whether or not you wanna all tell them, if you have an issue with your neighbor, you take it up in Circuit Court against your neighbor directly, the town's resources cannot just be devoted to Palomino anymore.
So, how do you do that, to stop a resident from using code enforcement as a weapon against another resident?
It's exactly like that.
How do you do that, though?
It's direction from staff, from council to staff, that's a, as it relates to this hub, and, and I can tell you, they're all doing it to each other, whether it's, you know, it's not one, it's all of them are doing it, saying, we're no longer playing this game, you know, if you have an issue with the neighbor, you take it up directly with your neighbor, and we're not gonna be in the middle of it anymore. And that's a decision for council to make, feel free to speak about it tonight if you want.
I, I would say without a doubt that we should do that, because it's happened in the past where neighbors are just throwing lobs back and forth and using code as a tool, and it's a waste of time. Let them deal with it in Circuit Court.
Thank you, Keith. I'm sorry, Dee, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Are we all in support of making that happen, or what? To relieve code from this ongoing saga?
You have to enforce the code.
Yeah, I'm, I'm for this, but I'd like it to be fleshed out a little bit more than, you know. Yeah, no, no, I mean, he just, he just, he just said, but I don't, what kind of direction do we give the code on that?
Yeah, I kinda feel the same.
What's the actual marching orders here?
And, and... What's going back and forth?
I'll give an example without using McBrides as an example, okay? Mr. Calabrese and his neighbor, and I, Andy, what's the name, I apologize?
The Caparos.
Caparos, have been lobbying code enforcement complaints at one another, back and forth, okay? To the tune of, you know, Mr. Caparos just put a light in to shine on his horse ring on an FPL pole, I got a call on that saying, we want you to investigate. Mr. Caparos called in on Jerry Calabrese, that his trailer, I think, was, was in the setback, so Jerry Calabrese moved his setback. One thing I, I wanna mention, 'cause it came up in public comment, and I wasn't gonna mention it, but it just stuck in my mind. Mr. Calabrese was cited by code for not having a dumpster at his residence, so he went and got a dumpster, and now, he, the dumpster's being used against him to say that he's using a commercial activity when the town required him to get the dumpster because of the same complaint. So, this is all very circular, and they're all lobbying these complaints against one another. So, yes, at some point, we can say to them, we're done, you know, Robert's been out to these properties. Robert, how many times have you been out to these properties?
Been twice, my staff have been more.
Wait a minute now. Robert, please, twice? Twice isn't, you know, that's not a lot of people lobbing things at each other.
I've been twice, but my staff have been out there this time.
Okay.
Eight total.
Okay, Robert, how many complaints total, roughly, have come in on, on Palomino?
Oh, it's had roughly about 12 complaints.
Can you come up to the mic, please?
And I'm grouping everyone together, Robert. You know, this isn't just one resident, this is multiple residents.
What is it, six properties out there that are in contention here?
Maybe four.
Four or five. So, those are the four we'd be interested in knowing.
Robertson, four or five. It's been, I'm going to say for the past, I wanna say six months, it's not just been one month, it's been a number of months since then. I wanna say close to, I wanna say between 20 and 30 complaints among everybody in the neighborhood. It's not just one, as it keeps indicating, one against the other, it was one against the other, one against the other, one against the other, one against the other.
So, roughly, four property owners have alleged 30 complaints?
Approximately, yeah. Via email, via letters, via attorneys, a number of ways.
Let me ask one other question, if I may, I'm just curious.
Sure.
The residents, the McBrides are fairly new residents, and the Caparos next door are fairly new residents. Prior to those two residents moving in, how many complaints did Calabrese have against him?
Zero.
Is right now, or in the last year or two, is this the only area, or is this happening all over town?
This is the hot location at this point, where complaints are being launched, back and forth from everybody.
Okay.
Yes.
Got a war zone?
Yep.
They have the full utter right to go to Circuit Court anytime they want, if they believe that their neighbor is in violation of a law or creating a nuisance. And so, at one point this week, we got five or six emails, you know, lodging complaints, you know, multiple complaints, and I called Andy, I said, at some point, these residents need to go to Circuit Court and deal with their issues, because we're not their...
Tool.
Yeah, their tool, their weapon, and that's what they're using us now, as a weapon against each other to settle their own internal issues.
So, from a statutory standpoint, because I heard somebody lobbed the term in selective enforcement, can, can, well...
I, I wanna reiterate that.
...management standpoint, are there any issues for us if we, if we send the letters to people saying, we're not doing it anymore, can they say selective enforcement for Benning Court?
Selective enforcement is a legal term that people throw out there. That means one thing, that we're enforcing the law differently on you because of your race, nationality, sexual origin, or gender.
Conflict of interest.
Okay? There's not one person here that can claim selective enforcement.
Got it.
Okay? Under the law.
Right.
In any way, shape, or form. And, and I hear from being shouted out, conflict of interest, if you're on the same side as your client, there's no conflict of interest. So, there are no conflicts of interest here. So, regardless, there's no selective enforcement, there's no conflict of interest, and there's even more no conflict of interest, there are selective enforcement when we're telling you, let them deal with it themselves in, in Circuit Court.
But we're, we're not incurring any additional risk by telling Robert, yes, record the phone calls, but don't follow up?
Robert has, has advised me that he's inspected every single property out there, okay? That he has been to Caparos, that he's been to Sea Visions, Calabrese, that he's been to McBride, and then he's been to Perez. Am I correct on that, Robert? He knows every single issue that's being complained of, and as it relates to all of them, except for the, the fence and the setback and the other one for McBride, Caparos attorney is coming into compliance with the code, and they give us notice today that he's back in town early next week, and that will be resolved. Zacco, who had a complaint, was resolved, so the only two, in Calabrese, according to Robert, is resolved. So, the only two open items on that street that have town-wide implications is McBride, which is in litigation, and Perez, who has an attorney now that we're dealing with to get him into compliance as well. So...
With all due respect, counselor, the question I'm asking is, do we incur any additional risk if we say to Robert, stop?
No, 'cause we're, we're already in court with the two...
Okay, okay. So, you have legal justification to stop?
At this point, they're using the town code enforcement system as a weapon solely, without any rhyme or reason on reality.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So... Any direction here to Robert?
From me?
From us.
Oh.
All of us, not just, not just you, I'm just...
I'm asking...
I mean, you're still in your, you're still in your comment section, but it's expanded, it's expanded from that, but I just, because this came up, I just kinda wanted to address this, looking forward to...
I think you should put them in the same sandbox and not make them play nice.
Put them in the same sandbox and make them play nice? Okay.
Yeah, no, I mean, I can wrap up my comments, I didn't wanna get into this whole thing. This, to me, should be, we should be dealing with this independently. So, that's all from my councilmember comments.
Okay, all right. Dee, would you like to...
Okay, me. First and foremost, not only am I sorry, Gary, for what you're going through, Kathy also needs an apology for what she has to go through and how it's affected you, and I'm sorry that you just have to go through this.
Thank, thank you, Dee.
I would like you all to know that an old-time resident of many, many years, and you should be interested in this, Benny, if you're listening, Juanita Romance, who worked for the town, was in a very serious car accident. Three out of her four siblings were injured severely. Juanita has undergone spinal cord surgery. We stopped on the way to Tallahassee to see her Monday, and it was horrific for me to walk in there and see her like that. It was, it was bad. There was jaws of life and cutting rooftops out, and it could've been worse. When you get into the backseat of a car, most people do not put their seatbelt on. This is a woman that prides herself on buckle, 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 and she had her seatbelt on. And I believe if she hadn't had that seatbelt on, she would not be here. She's on her way to a good recovery. She might've even been released tonight, will be transported down here to a rehab, and then to her son's house for a while until she can get her strength back. So, to me, that's a wonderful and happy story that she's coming back to us. I wanna talk about what Debbie Green had brought up about the curb out on Griffin Road. I think DOT should be called, and they should have to cut that thing down. I was not drinking, I was not doing anything wrong, and I went right over the top of that curb. Yes, and a cop pulled me over, coming out of Town Hall. Pulled over, he says, do you know what I did? I said, do you know what I did? And I said, yes, I do. And I said, that was a mistake and an error, and it needs to be fixed. And I said, and I'm not drinking, it was during the day, I'll be happy to get out and walk the line. But I agree, some has to go there, or that curb needs to be cut down, which we've done, we've had done before.
We should've brought that up the other day, huh?
Yeah, we should've. The, I'm glad that Gabe brought up taking care of that pond in Rolling Oaks. It's, it's yucky, and it's creepy, and it needs to be done. We did go to Tallahassee, we had a wonderful trip. It was actually funny and fun, and our own assistant town administrator, for the first time in his career, Russell, got to go and see how the wheels really work. And he will admit, this is a place that needs a lot, a lot of mints. And if you don't know the story, you can ask any one of us, we all know the mint story now. I was happy that Ralph Bellman went with us. He was a great help. He's an extremely interesting man, extremely bright, knows a lot, and he's a, he's a great asset to this town. Trying to look at all my notes here. We had great meetings with Mr. Jennings, Richard Stark, and everybody else. The only thing I can tell you is, they made us eat so much food, it was horrible. I mean, that's all they had around was food, food, and more food. If you went up there at 120 pounds, you definitely left at 130. I wish you could all go up there and spend a couple of days. It really is interesting, it's fun. People kinda let their hair down when they're all together like that. It's not like you're walking into their own little offices. We probably had, other than the, the kids they brought in, we had one of the biggest groups. We had Dean Parkinson, a longtime resident, and what an asset he is, sending him there all the time. That man knows more people and has more connections. And I really believe our meetings with the people we met with are very positive, and I have a feeling that we're gonna be doing good things here, and we're gonna get a little bit of a money break, which is great. I think what else, nothing else. I think that's about it, and like I said, maybe one day, you can join us up in Tallahassee. It really was fun. The road trip is the best. Who wants to fly into Atlanta and then have to fly back to Tallahassee and just sit there?
At 5:30 in the morning.
At 5:30 in the morning. Did they give you peanuts?
No.
We ate in the car, we could take our shoes off, we watched people sleep, I mean, it was great. Got to see, got to see a lot of, and don't take this the wrong way, we got to see a lot of real rural area, more cows than I can tell you. You know, all that admission gas just floating by. Before I sign off, he's not here, but Richard brought something forward about the planes. This is something I think would be a good thing, that we form some kind of a committee. And the reason I say this is, when they fly overhead, after they're all done for the day, go out and look at your water troughs. Look at them. This isn't just going into your horses and your chickens and your cows, you're getting this, too. This is horrible. So, if they can change this path and put it more down Griffin Road, where there's commercials and cars and concrete, it's better. When I would leave that airport, the city part of the airport, dropping people off that are flying out to the small islands, I came back every single time with stuff all over the car, and I'm getting yelled at by my husband. This was fuel they dump before they get to the airport. So, I think it's important that we all get something like this going, so we can discuss it and maybe make some changes at the airport. Thank you.
Freddie, you got anything? In the mic, pull that mic over to you.
I got a request here, I don't know whether it's handy, you can answer. Mary Kay wants to be put on to the complainer board. How do I do this?
It's, it's your, there's a vacancy, that's your appointment. I gave you the paperwork, there were two different people who expressed interest. It's your appointment to designate who you would like to put on the complainer board.
Just tell us.
Just state that on the record to see.
I would like to do that, do I do, would you promise to?
No, no, you do right, right now, do you?
I would like to do that, Dan.
Point Mary Kay, okay?
What I need to find out, though, is that board only can have so many members.
Yeah, but they just pulled one off, so you're good.
Okay.
Do we wanna consider putting Noel Hollingsworth on at large on that board?
No.
You just wanna sign the paperwork?
As Andy, I'm not, I'm not 100% on that.
Yeah, Mr. Hollingsworth did, did come to terms in the meeting with Keith, and had the comfort piece of mind to sign off on, on the waiver. He submitted that to me on Monday, along with a request to, to be reappointed to the board. I shared that with councilmember Fisk Kelly, since it was his appointment, but there was another application that, or note that came in that was submitted from someone else. And when I met with councilmember Fisk Kelly earlier, I said, it, it's his, his vacancy to fill, his appointment, there are two people who've expressed interest in it, it was up to him to determine who he wanted to fill that slot with, and apparently, he's, he's done so. As far as Mr. Hollingsworth and what the board does beyond that, it's obviously secured up to the council.
What was, what was the paper?
No, just the signing of the application, you have to fill out a...
No, 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 he was given a paper?
No, no, the, the, what's the term?
Liability.
Thank you, waiver of liability, yeah. That, that everybody else... That, that everybody else had to sign.
Everybody signed, but you just said we had a special paper?
Let me, let me explain.
Let Keith jump in here.
Yes. Councilmember Schroeder, Noel Hollingsworth had asked me for just confirmation that if he gets sued through his direct actions as a member of the board, that the town would provide legal coverage. That's the law anyway. So I was happy to write him a one-sentence letter saying that if you are sued directly as a board appointee from your direct role on that board, you are covered.
So we're providing this for everybody who sits on a board, correct?
Yes. They would like it. They can have it.
Everybody signed it. It's on a one-off. Applies to everybody.
Yeah.
Same thing applies to everybody. He just asked for a copy.
Okay.
All right.
Can I just ask you a question? Mary Gay?
Yeah, I already have my hand up.
Go ahead.
I, I had a question for you. I mean, you've been on the Drainage Committee since water was invented. Let me ask the question.
Hey, I've already read your mind. I already know where you're going.
Why do you want to switch?
Well, I've been on the Drainage Board since the beginning. I'm not going to give up arts and trails. So I would rather see if I can help out on the Comprehensive Plan and do battle there. The, the Drainage Board is kind of, I don't want to say boring, but it's, it's not... I'm a fighter, you know, and there just isn't much going on on Drainage, you know?
Where's George? Where's George?
So the problem is, I would have to resign from Drainage.
I got it. You can only be on two.
And I can only be on two, and I wanted the council to know that. And the other thing is, we're already short.
So, so you're resigning from Drainage, accepting the Compliment?
If I do, I'm going to leave Drainage short. Because I think, I think the Comprehensive Plan has more people on it than Drainage does. I think Drainage is down to, what, three or four?
No.
If I leave, what would it be down to?
Four, but another appointment would be made.
Right.
You don't have to feel bad.
Don't worry.
You keep trying to do it to me. Yeah, I mean, it, does it make it even or odd on the Drainage, on the Compliment?
Don't worry.
Don't worry about it. We, I think we got the right number then with you switching.
Okay, all right. I just feel that I have more to defend or, or keep an eye on. And going to six and seven meetings a month, and as old as I am, you know, I'd, I'd rather kind of be a little selective as to where I go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Andy, how many, how many members are on the Compliment Board? I don't have that number in my head.
Coming into this evening, there were seven. I'm sorry, six, because we had the vacancy that Councilmember Fissa Kelly just filled. But, and you removed somebody this evening. So of the seven, we were down to five. Now you're at six. Is that correct, Russell?
That's correct.
Great. So would you also consider putting Noel on the Comprehensive Plan Board, reappointing at large?
I'd rather have a break for a little while. Noel's been on forever. And a lot of people will not come to that or before that board is, as you said earlier, because of the way he's spoken to people in the past.
I'm o, I'm okay with it. It's up to, you know, you guys, if you guys are okay with it. If you're not okay with it, say you're not okay with it.
I'm not.
How's Joanne?
Good.
Can I just say one thing? I didn't realize that, that it was going to make it even number and that...
What, do you want to hold me?
Don't worry about it.
This, this has nothing to do with that. I want to make it clear for anyone who's confused right now. Councilmember Fissa Kelly had an open seat, okay? That open seat, he is elected to fill with Mary Gay Chabels, okay? That is his decision. It's not a voted upon issue. He already made that announcement. That's done. As a result of the action taken by the council earlier, there is an at-large seat which is appointed by the council that is open. Councilmember Jablonski suggested the filling of that at-large seat with Noel Hollingsworth, who expressed interest in Councilmember Fissa Kelly's appointment. So as a result, what's being discussed now is whether or not there's three votes to put Noel Hollingsworth in an at-large seat or whether or not to see conditional applicants. That's the discussion right now.
Do you have a long quote, I guess?
With every reaction, there's, you know... There has been multiple issues. And as you pointed out, there are consequences sometimes for your actions. And I don't want a board that's always angry, always yelling. You know, it gets very aggressive. And you've been there. You've seen it.
I'm not disputing anything you're saying. We, we all got to make a choice. You know, I made my choice. Mayor made his choice. There's three of you left.
This isn't fun.
Don't everybody rush up to the mic. You know, I might have a long idea here.
This is thought. How do I feel? I respect Noel's knowledge. He's been on the board longer than I served on it. I served on it for a long time. I have heard... I only missed one night that was an issue, and that was the first time Bergeron came in and that meeting was out of control. I know that we've tried to encourage... What's the right word? I don't want to say civil behavior because I don't think Noel's ever uncivil, but...
Passion, good behavior.
I get that, but, you know, passion has to be restrained. What could it be like up here if we were extremely passionate? We're at each other's throats all the time or screaming at each other?
I don't know. Is there a compromise?
You know, at, at the last meeting, Noel had to be shut down. So, you know, maybe a couple of more deep breaths and, and he'll get the message. You know, I like Noel, and I'm probably destroying a relationship with the words I'm saying right now, but, you know, maybe it's just a little bit too soon.
No, I think, I think you're right. I think a long-time resident, full of knowledge. I could have said something else, but definitely full of knowledge. Knows the rules, knows how to do things. Questions, questions, and to the point where it makes you think, makes you think outside the box. But I, I think we're all ready for a break. I'm going to say no.
Or just your brother? Ready? All right, that's Drainage. What is it? You don't have, you don't have a vote?
All right, so maybe you put out then for filling the at-large seat and see if there's any other individuals interested and bring it back in another council.
You're not, you're not.
Right.
We haven't.
That is safe. All right. Move on.
Mike, are you ready or no? Freddie, you done?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. All right, I want, I want to read something a little bit because I'm not on any social media sites and I keep, people call me and tell me and I hear all this garbage from stuff, people that are putting things on websites or whatever. So bear with me a minute here. As it relates to the town's legal department, let's understand the real facts and know one that are simply made up at the podium. Our fiscal year starts October 1st. From October 1st to the date, the town has paid only $115,012 in legal fees. Of that amount, only $38,000 was paid for general services. $76,000 was paid for defending our town in major litigations related to Pepper Pines and frivolous actions filed by residents such as the McRice's. Legal is tracking approximately $400,000 less than the current budgeted amount of $736,000, which was only budgeted for one year, only to have extra funding for the eventual CCA trial. It should also be noted that legal services, including lobbying services paid to the county lobbyists and legal code enforcement. So in all, assuming we can get some of these lawsuits quickly dismissed and the things with Pines remain quiet, the entire legal lobby and code payment this fiscal year are tracking to be between $300,000 and $400,000. Ironically, a resident keeps posting on social media that Mr. Polyakov constructed a very expensive house in Sunshine Ranches. While Mr. Polyakov's personal finances are not our concern, it is interesting to note that if this resident is correct, his taxes will be approximately $150,000 this year, which would equal half of this year's legal expenditures. Finally, it should be noted that in the past five years, legal has helped the town obtain nearly $3 million in grants, which makes the town's legal department the only cost-neutral department in the entire town. Mr. Polyakov has been a town resident since 1981 and has a vested interest in protecting the future of our town. There is absolutely no doubt that our fees would double, if not triple, if Mr. Polyakov had not agreed to subsidize his hourly fee, which is the lowest municipal fee charged in the entire county at $175 per hour. In the future, please speak with knowledge and facts. Instead of making backless comments and claims, we will be happy to provide any resident with copies of the town's expenditures at any time. So I just want to get that out there because I hear stuff. I don't know it. I don't see it. I don't read it. But that's exactly why I'm not on social media. So the other thing is, I want to jump in. Tallahassee, we had a great trip. Want to thank Ralph Bellman for attending. Starkweather also came. He didn't join us, but he was there in other meetings, a different thing. He's a resident. Was on LaRae. I don't know if it's LaRae or Mustang, one of the two. But he was up there. He was in communication with me the whole time we were up there. We had Parkinson, Dean Parkinson was with us and joined us. So we had different events with a lot of different places. FDOT, we had a great meeting. Susan's, Councilmember Susan Starkey joined us there and gave great support, backup, brought their copy of the resolution in being against the parking ride. So that meeting went well, gave us some information to follow up some other meetings locally here, and we're going to do that. And met with Jennings and Stark. And we had great meetings. So we got some pictures with everybody. We chit-chatted. And so it went well. I would have liked to have had a couple more meetings lined up and different things, but during Broward Days, they're really slammed and jammed up. So what we might be talking in the future is to go up a little early, like I did three weeks ago, and meet with different groups and different people. What you try to do is when you have issues in play, which we have, what, six issues in play right there? Six different issues in play to try to get money for different projects. And you find out who are on the committees and on those boards, and they may not be related to our town stuff, but they're on those committees. So you meet with them, talk to them, plead your case, sell your deal and why you need it and why it's best, and we greatly appreciate their assistance. So all that's moving along. We've gotten through quite a few committee processes and steps along the way already. Until this is all said and done and session's over and the governor signs off, you never know where you end up. But we have a real good feeling moving forward that we're going to prevail in some fashion when it comes to the end. So I want to thank those residents who participated, who came out. We had a great time. And thank you, residents who came out tonight and joined us. We always enjoy you all coming out to participate with our meeting. So thank you. Other than that?
We did see Gary Farmer up there, too.
Yeah, we did see Gary Farmer. Go ahead, Bob.
Hey, I am remiss in not recognizing my travel partner.
Oh, Russell, yeah.
Was up at 3 o'clock in the morning, so we made it our plan. Russell also handled a couple of things for us jointly and had a great... I, I think he had a great time too. But what Russell also brought to the table, if you recall, is there are some cottage industries starting out on ADA requirements. I'm not going to go into any detail.
Right.
Because Comcast is still here. But, you know, he was out there looking out for the town every place he could and to try to influence on a very, very challenging topic. So Russell, thank you. Thanks for coming along with us.
And Speaker of the House also, in his comments and speaking, said that when he retires and he's done, he's out, he's moving to Southwest Ranches. So we were thrilled to hear and we roared in the back of the room when we heard that. That was some great stuff. Russell, thanks for joining us. That was a fun time. I was a tour guide for a short period of time because we had a few hours. So we had to run around the Capitol to see the pictures on the walls because that had ended up itself, that if you take the time to go, give yourself three or four hours to walk around and look at all the old historical pictures on the wall because that's very cool. So I keep saying, somebody ought to have a book if there's not already a book out with all those in it. So, all right, so I'm completed with my comments and legal comments.
Sure, Mayor. I'll, I'll be brief tonight first. And foremost, thank you to the councilmembers who went to Tallahassee. Mayor, you went twice already this session. It's exceptionally important for Southwest Ranches to be seen up there. And you all always do it with the force. And it's great to hear the feedback that I got, including the Speaker's office, that you all were up there and heavily participating in the week's event. You know, as it relates to the Speaker, it's very good news for the town that he's considering moving here after he's done with his term. He's been a great help to the town this year. And I hope to report some maybe exciting news that we'll see at the end of session, and I'll let you know if it comes to fruition. And, and which would be good news and he'd be a welcome addition to the town of Southwest Ranches. I, I thank the mayor for his comments. And unfortunately, with the advent of social media, when someone posts something and they're not challenged or unfortunately, in cases sued for their defamatory statements, others find their statements to be factual. And whether it's making up a value of one's home or how much their take-home pay is or what the town's even paying them. You know, if someone just makes it up, it becomes suddenly a fact that is quoted by others. Then the mayor is correct that the town has only paid thus far, from fiscal year October 1 to date, $115,000 for all legal services. Of that only, I think it was $36,000 was legislative items. The rest was all litigation. And if the litigation ends, we will have one of the lowest legal budgets around. And that is the hope in the near future. The town council did budget $400,000, which increased the legal budget tremendously last year because you wanted to have a slush fund to be ready for the Pepper Pines case. As it relates to the, yeah, sorry, it's like, don't call it that, you know? So whatever you call it, a war chest is what we call it. But, you know, not contingency in law, you can't say that. Yeah, so we call it a war chest, et cetera. A fund that you can go to to hire the experts and to get ready for trial. The Pepper Pines litigation is heading to the Court of Appeals because Pines appealed yet again, a loss relating to their sovereign immunity. The hearing is the first week of April. And then it will come back down yet again to trial court to start the process over again. I told Andy and Marty, I don't believe that it's going to go to trial this fiscal year because of every time there's a decision against Pines, they appeal it and it moves forward. So I, I've asked them that although the legal budget's going to come way under what they projected or forecast, because we're not doing anything in that case, that they roll over that amount till the next year. So there's no additional fees to the residents. It just gets rolled over so that war chest will be there when it eventually does go to trial. We don't anticipate using all that money. I don't want anyone to think that. But Marty's very conservative and wanted to make sure that the general fund of reserves would never have to be touched for this major litigation where the town's seeking, I, I think our number is over $20 million in damages as it relates to the lawsuit. So, you know, again, thank you. it relates to the lawsuit. So, um, you know, again, thank you for your comments. I would just hope that our residents who are continually, and non-residents, a lot of non-residents, who are, are posting things on social media, uh, think twice about trying to make sure it's factual before just posting their, their general ideas. Uh, Mayor, back to you. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Burns?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and I'll, I'll be very brief. I just want to talk about the next meeting, uh, the next council meeting. We have an LPA hearing again. Uh, as, as I think you all know, the Flamingo Road land use amendment is coming forward. Uh, I'm expecting that we're going to have, uh, a lot of public input that evening. So we're going to begin the, the LPA hearing at six o'clock to allow sufficient time. So, just want to let you all know, we're going to start an hour early, so that we have, uh, the, the time for the public, and, and you have time to debate that issue appropriately. Uh, the other thing I'll share with you is I left a flyer in, in all your boxes. Uh, at the April 11th meeting, starting at six o'clock, we're going to do a little, uh, we'll put out some refreshments and acknowledge and thank our volunteers, those residents who serve on the advisory boards, uh, the Historical Society, the, the Astrid Knight Parks Foundation, and some other folks who, who volunteer within town hall. We just want to acknowledge and thank those people for that. So, we're going to have some refreshments beforehand, we'll have a proclamation, and we just want to give you the opportunity to thank those people who are serving the public. And that's all I have in there, but I think Councilmember Schroeder has a question.
Do you not want to say anything about Water Matters Day?
A- as a matter of fact, yeah, thank you.
Detroit.
The, the banner hanging in front of you, the town received an Emerald Award for the, the Calusa Corners, uh, project that we did over there. Uh, December did her, she's moving, that's why she's not here this evening. She's taking a couple of days out of the office to do that. But she did her usual stellar job.
The Davey.
You go through, it's when you walk through the Water Matters displays, and there's thirty, forty tents, exhibitors, different, different things. And they, they all typically have little booths with a little tent, and they, you know, they're not really exciting. It's, it's, you know, you go to, you know, an exhibit, and you see the, and I, not, 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 I'm sorry. I shouldn't have said, but, when, when I say that, I mean, it's, it's, they're, they're typical, you know, vendor exhibits or, or, or different displays.
It's a blue or white tent, it's really boring.
When you get, but when you get, when you get to the Southwest Ranches area, December sets up, it, it's just, it's a retreat, it's so inviting, it's landscape, it's mulch, it's plants, it's all, I, you sit down, you don't want to leave. I, I mean, it's, it's, the town's reputation at that event is absolutely stellar, and she outdid herself again this year. So, thank you for, for calling me on that.
Well, Bob was there, Doug was there, I was there. And, uh, you can't believe what a job December did, along with, uh, Chris Bradlow. It was incredible, beautiful. Anything you would like to donate, yard chachkes, whatever it might be, would be greatly appreciated. I told her that I'm going to give her, uh, for that event, she will get the old Charlie Tona horse to put in the middle as part of the ambiance. But people were stopping, everybody was stopping at that particular one. And what she had done, she had gotten some chairs and different things to make it look really welcoming and warm. She forgot to take the stickers off that they came from a garage thing. So people were saying, oh, I think I'm going to take that. I wonder how much she's asking for that. So she's telling all these people, these are our things, you know, they're not for sale. I finally told her, I said, December, you need to get the stickers off the chairs and the different items that you brought up. But it was really, really nice. She did an incredible job.
All right, you forgot one thing. You got to add in the parade.
Oh, we did do the parade. We did do lots of bubble gum for all the kids.
So after the, uh, after we went to the Treecock Spark last Saturday, we left and had to be at, uh, Cooper City on Ninety, uh, at the town hall, and we rode in the, uh, Founder's Day Parade over at Cooper City. So, that was a nice fun event, throwing candy out to the kids and whatnot. So, uh, we had a good time at that. And, uh, but yeah, Andy, anything else for you?
No, I'm good, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Russell, what do you got next?
Anything?
Yes, Mayor.
Eleven?
A little expenditure here. A resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving the issuance of a purchase order in the amount of $12,884.11 to Delmark and LLP for a new server to replace an old server that is nearing the end of its useful life, provided for separability, provided for conflicts, and provided for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any public comment on this matter? Seeing no public comment. Public comment is closed. Back to us. Any questions? Bob?
Yeah, I do. Um, we have a server in place right now. I'm not sure who the right person asked the question. Russell? So we have an existing server in play right now. We have one, or we have two?
We actually have two in place right now.
Okay.
So we have our, a primary server and a secondary server.
So is the primary server the better, or are they a pair?
It's two separate servers.
No, I get that.
I purchased that, at, at separate times, um, to, the secondary is basically was, was provided to us to serve as, as a backup.
To failover.
Right, a failover. And what had, what, what occurred was, the failover that we had at the time actually failed.
Right.
And so, uh, Tamarack IT actually loaned us one, and we've had that loaner here since 2017. The server that we're looking to spec now is of such proportion and of such, uh, capacity that we will actually replace the two servers.
Oh.
So we'll have one server.
So you're not going to have a failover capability?
We, we won't need to have that with this. And everything is backed up, as you know, with virtualization and everything else. So, we're confident. This is the spec that the Tamarack IT.
I read the specs.
Yeah.
Specs good.
And, and they feel that this will serve all of our needs, and security will, will be fine.
Right. Uh, the reason I was asking is if, if the one that is out there right now is halfway decent still, why not put the new one in as the primary, and the other one as the failover, the old one?
Well, I'm sorry, I, I might have misstated. The one that we are going to replace, we're going to keep it here, and it will remain, if we need it, to.
Okay.
Put it into service as a fail.
Okay, good.
But we'll keep it on site, it just won't be actively being used, if you will.
Okay. And the, uh, server's being bought off a state term contract?
That's correct.
Okay.
We did receive pricing on, we did receive two quotes. Um, we received another quote from a company called Prosys, it was actually higher, it was for Cisco server.
Yep.
This Dell server meets the specs that we need, and it was state contracted, and it's under the amount that we even budgeted for.
Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, call the question.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yeah.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisickelli?
Yeah.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Motion to pass.
Okay. Approval of minutes?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any public comments on our minutes? We've been corrected in the past. Seeing none? Public comment closed?
Councilmember comments?
Go ahead.
When is the last time we had an issue with Russell's minutes? I mean, I remember Debbie pointing one out. What was that, nine and a half years ago? Kind of feels like.
No.
It's been a while.
Okay.
All right, call the question. Busy.
Russell. Call the question. I apologize.
Approval of minutes?
Interacting with the public. Uh, Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisickelli?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yeah.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll take it. Thank you all for coming.